This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay, good evening. Today is Wednesday, May 25th, 2025. This is the zoning board of Hills of East Hampton. We are both in person and virtual. So, the 28th, what did I say? Okay, the 28th. Is there anyone in the audience who would need, that would like to say anything that is not on one of the agenda items this evening? If there's anybody online, please raise your hand. No hands? No hands? All right, then we will start with our first public hearing. Heather Ellis and Leslie Golds seeking a special permit pursuant of the chapters 6.7 and 11.12 and 12.7 of the zoning ordinance. The applicant is seeking approval to demolish a pre-existing non-conforming garage and construct a new one in its footprint. The property is located in the R10 district at 68 Cherry Street. Is there someone here to speak to that application? You are, you may raise your hand. All right, you're on the screen. Hello there.
Hi.
So you're looking to remove your existing shed and build a new one?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and seeing that it is coming from photo form, is that an indication that there's going to be a pre-existing structure upon its arrival?
Yes, it will.
That is one of my questions. I was wondering how you were going to build it so close to the property line? We've run into that situation before. Okay, approximately how far off the property line is the structure?
Currently, which direction are you talking about?
Side yard.
The side yard? How far is it right now to the property line? About four feet.
And the rear yard?
The rear yard, probably about 15. Yeah, 15.
The new structure will fit on the same footprint?
Yes, that's correct. Except for two feet into the backyard. Longer. Yeah, so it's two feet longer than the current structure.
Okay, and rear setback in an R10 district, sir, would be... Hold that up quickly.
It'll be 14 by 22 then, probably.
No, it'll be 14 by 20.
Oh, it's a big structure, isn't it? You know, I'm... This is a garage. Correct. It's like 10 feet because this is real gutted to this, the whole ancillary building. Whether they can build an addition in the AHU setbacks. Side setback, 15, 25 feet side, maximum height. And the principal building, rear yard.
While he's looking that up, I'm assuming that there's a concrete pad underneath the existing.
Yes, there is.
So this will just sit on that same pad?
Yes, that's correct. We're also like thinking about maybe having the, the concrete. It's pretty, um, it's pretty worn out and it's in pretty bad shape. So we might just actually remove it.
Okay. But you're basically, you're basically looking to put it right back in the same place?
Yes, exactly. It's going in the same place. Yep, same exact footprint.
I believe it is 30 feet for any other structure. For garages, I'm not seeing what it has to be from the rear here, but I know for any accessory structure other than private garages, six. So it would either be maintaining the non-conforming, and the question is, does increasing what would be conforming, a significant intensification of the non-conforming nature of the structure? Some 10 feet from any principal building, some 30 feet from the front. Are detached, more from the front, side setback of 15 feet. Yeah, so then, it doesn't talk about the distance from the back, so then my understanding is it would be 30 feet from the setback. So it's also pre-existing non-conforming in that same direction as well. Okay, so it would be, it would continue both the rear and the side yard, non-conforming. Any questions from members of the board concerning the application?
No question, just a comment as I often make on these particular types of things where we're looking at a pre-existing non-conforming with a lot that's at this point way smaller than the zoning would allow. Our zoning is way out of date. We need to, we're working on it. Please help our city councilors to fix this.
You do love your plug there, don't you?
That's why I'm here, really.
Oh boy, all right. Is there anyone in the audience or online that has anything that would like to add or question concerning this? Hearing no one. Okay, at this point we will close the public hearing. A motion to close the public hearing?
No, no, so moved.
All right, any opposed? Sold. Okay, yeah, is there any conversation, concerns, questions among the board? All right, would someone like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to grant the special permit application from Heather Ellis and Leslie Golds pertaining to their property in the R10 zoning district at 60 Cherry Street to replace their pre-existing non-conforming garage with a new one in the same footprint. What else do I have?
Do you have a chance to review the decision draft that I sent out earlier?
For this one?
Yeah. You said if, unless there's any comments on that you could move to just adopt that decision. It kind of has all the boilerplate conditions in there as well.
If there are no further comments, then we, I would move to adopt all of the texts in that, in that draft decision. That I sent earlier.
All right, all in favor? All right, congratulations.
Thanks. Thank you.
So it usually takes a few days to write up the decision, at which point it will be given to the city clerk. And then, oh, then this 20-day appeal period starts, at which point then you will be notified and you'll have to go to the Hampshire County Record of Deeds and record this, and then you are free to get a building permit.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, have yourselves a great evening.
You too, thank you. Have a good night.
Okay. Next application is the decree continuing an application from April 23rd, variance pursuant, pursuant of chapter 13 and zoning ordinance. The applicant is seeking the approval to construct a single-family home on a parcel with insufficient frontage. The parcel is, has 23 and a half acres in Northampton, 1.7 acres in East Hampton. The applicant intends to build a home on the Northampton side of the lot. The only frontage for the parcel is 50 feet on Lyman Street, where 100 feet is required. The property is located in R15 zoning district of 32 Lyman Street, map 105 lot 9. Hello there.
So I'm Betty Dupre. I'm daughter Alicia. When we purchased the property in 2018, the goal was to ultimately build a house over in East Hampton. We don't have the adequate frontage. And I realize that's a big stretch, and I'm not trying to disrespect the fact that those laws are in effect for a good reason. But the driveway that we will be using is driveway that consists of rainier doors, trucks, trail trucks are going through. So we're going to be doing curb cut, will use the existing, and that's kind of our only option. The other options are to level an existing ranch that we own there, which we know housing is, you know, very scarce. So to do that is not only going to process financial hardship to demolish it, but also to take a single-family house that's been rented away. I don't think anything will cause, you know, substantial detriment to the area or to the public by putting a, a single-family house there. The frontage will allow for the emergency vehicles to be able to come in. We'll do the cul-de-sac. I talked to Dan Costini in regards to what he would require, certainly to abide by those rules. I did talk to Carolyn Mish, and the reason why I'm with the board is that she says we have to abide by East Hampton's rules because Northampton has a totally different frontage requirement, and this access to our land, which is a lot of land, is coming from East Hampton side. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. If you look at the pictures that I submitted, you'll see how wide the, you know, the driveway is. It actually goes up through there.
No, I don't believe I've received any pictures.
This one?
Yeah, that's something, that's an old DBA special permit.
Guys, that's property. Never mind.
That's the actual driveway.
Just looking across Lyman Street.
Yeah, so if you're at Ella Clark's and you're looking, and that's the road that you would come in to access the land. And it's kind of a looped around driveway. So when we first purchased the land in 2018 and we came before the board, we kind of split was because Raynor Doors was going to buy their section. That's the only reason why I split it. He then decided he wasn't going to buy it. So that's where the whole frontage thing changed a little bit. I mean, I think if you still look at it, the single-family house versus, you know, the property line, that frontage, you know, we're short that like S month fee. The, I already tried to buy land from the gentleman next door and leave it existing the way that it was and just use it as part of the frontage. It wasn't open for that. So it's kind of like, I'm kind of landlocked in a sense, basically. And I don't know where to go with this.
So I, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Nobody can, yeah. I mean, this is my only option to do this because Northampton says you have to meet the East Hampton's, you know, criteria in order for them to even consider.
Okay.
I mean, you know, when you're building a house and you have to purchase, you have to bring water, you have to bring electricity, you have to bring all that stuff in. It's costly to begin with, but then to add on, to demolish a single-family, to get the frontage is just, I don't know.
So if I may, Mr. Chair, I can, can talk a little bit about kind of what we've been working on on the planning side with this one here. Since this originally come up, we know this is not a buildable lot essentially. It doesn't have enough frontage in the way that the lines were divided. Where, and I included in the special permit decision here from 2018, that it states clearly in here that essentially it doesn't have enough frontage and can only be considered a buildable lot, going through the subdivision approval process with lines being divvied up. Essentially trying to build on the East Hampton side of the line to apply for variance would be considered a self-imposed hardship because you can't divide up the lines and then say, oh, that's not a buildable lot. But to the question of the Northampton side of the lot is a different question. That's not really East Hampton's jurisdiction. They want to build in Northampton. That's kind of the call for Northampton. But what's come up is this, and speaking with the Northampton Planning Department, is Northampton zoning requires that if you're built across two zoning districts, you have to meet the requirements of the frontage in the other zoning districts. So Northampton is requiring the Dupre's to meet our standards for frontage, where we don't necessarily have an opinion if they want to build over in the Northampton side of the lot. So the variance request of us is saying, can we consider this to be a buildable lot for the sake of frontage? Effectively waiver, waiver from frontage effectively to allow them to build on the Northampton side. And kind of looked at this, while meeting the criteria for what the findings that you'd have to make for a variance. Before we even get into the nuts and bolts of that portion, a condition I believe would have to be put on to say that, yes, we're considering this as enough frontage for a building lot on the condition that the house is not built in East Hampton. So essentially, what we'd be granting here is saying you have frontage to build a single-family home, just not in this town. It has to be on the Northampton side, and the thinking is that that should satisfy Northampton's criteria to say they have enough frontage here in our zone to build a single-family home in the Northampton side.
Raynor Door is been there for a while, and we'd be using the same. So is that already a pre-existing non-conforming, having Raynor Door there with just little frontage?
It is, but it was created by this decision.
Since it's already there?
Yep.
And it's, you know, with the, our, this is already a non-conforming, you're not having a burst. If you're not making a test, do we have a decision?
That's why they're here.
Yes. So I'm looking online and I see the Raynor Door driveway, it kind of makes a look.
Yeah.
Would you build another road out from their parcel lot to the back?
So the loop was always Raynor over that building, the gentleman, his family started that door company. And he owned the two houses. When he passed away, one of the houses, she sold immediately. That's part of that loop. We bought the other house with the Raynor Doors and all the land. And again, Raynor Doors was going to buy that. So the loop would, we would come in and we would just go out from the Raynor Doors. But we wouldn't, the, the big thing is, is that with, or we'd go straight, whatever we would be allowed to do. What we wouldn't do is we wouldn't do any, any new curb cut or anything like that. I think with Dan Costini, he had come to the dealership and talked to me and said that he would want us to go in, do a cul-de-sac like thing where the emergency vehicles could come around and it would be easy for them to come, and the house would be fully sprinkled, you know, all that. And I said, absolutely we would do that because Northampton has such high requirements of solar and all of that stuff that we have to do. I mean, the house is going to be costly, and we're building it so that it's one level for her husband that, you know, ultimately he'll probably be in a wheelchair.
So you said you purchased, you purchased the Raynor lot and you owned the lot and the?
We owned all the land, the Raynor building and the, the house on Lyman. And there's another house on Lyman where there's like a little horse chute where the, basically the, the the track, trail trucks would come in, drop off the doors, and then loop out, which now they come in, had to turn around and go out the same.
So somebody else bought the, one of the houses. Did they also get that land?
They did. They got like, not even, they have their little like, little square, their house, their garage. Yeah, it's just a little tiny, and they're, and they're, you know, choosing.
I remember when we, when we made this decision, there was all kinds of discussion, trying to figure out how to get the lots exactly lined up.
Right, and we only did that, we would have left it like all open the way it was because they were gonna, they were like, I want to buy that. He'd said, he was in partners with the gentleman who passed away. He said, I want to buy the Raynor section. And we were like, okay, well, we have to come before the board or we have to split this up. Not that that would have given us any difference with the frontage, because the frontage is the frontage.
Yep.
You know? So we talked with Carolyn Mish, she was like, I don't, you, you have no, I have no problem. You definitely have a building lot there. These are things you have to perform by, but you have to meet East Hampton, the next municipality that you're coming across accessing the land. You have to meet their guidelines.
So you'll, if, in that, you know, this decision was made?
In 2018. I know. No, she was like 20 years ago. That was pre-COVID. That's what we're blaming it on.
BC. Before COVID. So.
And I remember sitting in, in front of you guys saying, you know, and I remember a woman saying like, why would you buy that land and not want it? It was presented as like a condo, you know, type thing, and all the neighbors were there, and I said, I'm not condoing it. I bought it because behind my yard, ultimately I'm going to build my daughter a house there. And you guys would be like, you gotta come back in front of us because you don't have the adequate frontage. And do I sit and wait until East Hampton changes their, their frontage laws to do that? There you go, this is where you come in.
Thank you.
Set the stage there, Betty.
Because you stamp, uh, Northampton, I think you need five huge frontage, and that's it, you know?
So if we look at the curb cuts already there. We're not changing anything. And, you know, I think it really comes down to the stipulation of what, you know, the fire department would like for emergency access, whether it is come into a cul-de-sac and then come off of that.
And that's what Dan had come and talked to me about.
Right.
And I said, whatever, you know, I'm all for, obviously I'm not going to dump this kind of money and not make sure that my family's safe.
Yeah.
So he said, come in, do a cul-de-sac so that the vehicles could move around easily, and then their driveway.
And what is the future? I mean, you said that the Lyman door, or Raynor door, rather, folks are no longer there. What's the future?
No, they're, no, they're there, but I, I mean, they, we don't know what, I don't think the future's going to be a lot there.
Okay.
You know, I think that it's a big conglomerate that joined with him, and ultimately when that happens, usually they just grab that base of clients, use it as much as they can, and then they, then they're gone. So as far as, I mean, I'm, I'm seeing less activity and noise there than ever was there.
Okay. Does it, any members of the board have any questions for the? All right, um, so I guess I will say, is there any members of the public who have any questions or concerns they'd like to ask the board? A lot of people joining, but if anyone, if anyone has any questions, they can go ahead and, comments, they can go ahead and raise their hand. Seeing none?
I'm the public portion.
Okay, second, okay, motion's been made to close, and second to close the public hearing. Discussion among the board.
I think nothing's going to change for us. Not really doing it.
I don't, and it's true that like knocking down a house so that they could build a different one is an option. I don't like that idea. I don't like that. And I, and I don't, I don't see it exactly. It doesn't affect the frontage. And the, the goal of the frontage requirement is not being affected by this variance, is my statement.
I looked at it a few different ways. One way I was thinking was, well, this is a lot less impactful than if they punched a road in there and did a subdivision.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's, yeah, that would fit. And the other thing I was thinking is, I looked at the zoning earlier, was too, you're not building anything in East Hampton, so what are the, like if they just put a driveway in to camp, right? But we don't have any real, any requirements for that.
So.
Yeah, the biggest thing is, is the stipulation from the emergency services.
Yep, I do have, um, I sent that out to you folks, got a little bit of a buzzer beater. We got it 15 minutes before 5 here. But just the stipulations, the conditions that the fire prevention officer says is, any home built shall have a compliant residential automatic fire sprinkler system installed in it, and then the driveway shall be a durable surface to handle the load of a fire engine and shall be at least 10 feet wide. And that's the concerns we have from fire. If those conditions are included in any decision, then fire is satisfied. And, uh, any other boards or departments?
No, I spoke with DPW. DPW is, it's on the applicant. If they want to connect to water or sewer, it's up to them to present what they would like to do, and then it will be DPW evaluating whether or not they think it works, but that's not, it has to be conditioned. That's just standard procedure. And then the only thing for us in planning is just making it very clear within the condition that the house cannot be built on the East Hampton portion of the spot.
Okay. Do both fire departments need to be appeased on this?
Uh, probably, but in order to then get the single-family home building permit, that's where Northampton gets its, its chance to, uh, say how they want it done.
It's not contradictory.
Yeah, but 10 feet seems narrow for what fire departments would be asked for. So they want like a 15.
Could be, could be. We say 10 feet, Northampton says 50, and it must have at least 10.
We need smaller chunks.
Okay. Any further discussion? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Before we do that, just because, uh, we are, it is a variance and it's a little bit more strict than our special permits. Do recommend the board just take a look. I've got them all up here, just the four criteria and the findings that are being made here, because we've got, first one being variance respect to a particular parcel of land.
Zoom in a little bit more.
Can I get it to walk over to the screen?
Right, it would be nice. Can I zoom in a little bit more? I think I can.
There you go.
I can see now. Now I can reach that.
There we go. So it's a variance must be with respect to a particular parcel of land or existing building on the land, which I can fill that all in, all the parcel details, that one's kind of given. Must be circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape or topography, especially affecting such land or structure, but not affecting generally the zoning district which is located. I think the topography, shape of the, um, you have a very large parcel here, a very narrow, yeah, with a very narrow entranceway, but more importantly is that it is split across two municipalities. And then the literal enforcement of the ordinance involves substantial hardship, financial, otherwise, so. Again, the hardship here being their compliance with another municipality's regulations in order to get them there for something that necessarily isn't our concern. I think that's the one that maybe you guys might want to talk about. But how do we quite make that? Because that's one area where I think we can get there. It's how do we get there?
Is that the condition that the structure that is being built based on the allowance of this ordinance is not constructed in East Hampton?
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
Yeah, right, um, a structure being built based on what's granted by this ordinance specifically cannot be built in the East Hampton part of the lot. And no structure built based on this variance that allows, allows building of a structure with this, you know, inadequate frontage on this particular lot can be built on the East Hampton side.
That would be the condition, I think. Um, it's, it's making that fine. That would be the condition, I think. Um, it's, it's making that finding of literal enforcement of the ordinance because.
Oh, I see.
Generally, the, the, the literal enforcement of them requiring frontage when they have no frontage, when it's on the East Hampton side of things, there was, there was a case again that I mentioned before where that finding was made, where the variance is, you're essentially split over two different lots. Um, so the enforcement is you can't get frontage, therefore you're making it an unbuildable lot. And it's, I guess, a similar type of rationale here. Just on the Northampton side of things, if that makes sense.
This is one lot that stretches over both. It's not like there's a different lot when we get to the line or any other way we can define that as being shown. Areas.
That is one, it is one lot.
Yeah, it's, it's, I think when you kind of go across municipalities like that, it, it both is and isn't because it's under common ownership, um, but anywhere you're going to see that lot, there's always going to be that clear dividing line. We can see that here. So not a separate building lot.
Right.
Right. So we just, you know, we just have to stipulate that no, no structure will be constructed within the city limits of East Hampton.
Within that lot.
In that lot. Well, this, the decision is to bring to this lot, so.
It better be part of the right.
Yeah, not totally the condition in here. I guess, again, that, that finding that needs to be made, I guess, to be, to agree that the, the hardship here is a lack of frontage in Northampton and the Northampton's requirement to comply with our zoning regulation, like that's where.
When we say substantial, we're talking about C on the screen, right?
Yep.
When we say involves substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, could one say that having a giant lot in, that's technically buildable, but not being able to build on it is a substantial hardship, hardship? Does that not count?
No, because they created that lot, which means it's a self-imposed hardship, uh, for kind of if you look at the lot, kind of wholesale.
But in Northampton?
Yes. Uh, so that's, that's where the, the, the lack of frontage is the hardship where they would need to essentially, to, to build in Northampton, to get frontage in Northampton, the hardship there is they have no frontage and there's no real, uh, feasible way for them to attain the frontage required to build in Northampton.
So i- it, just for some clarification. Prior to the formation of what is now the current non-conformity, there were non-conform. So the, you know, leading with the original decision is in that the subject properties are three separate pre-existing non-conforming lots under common ownership that share a common driveway off-lane. So in essence, we are looking to take now one of those, the non-conforming lot and making it still, taking it back to being a non-conforming lot under common ownership with a shared drive. We're almost going right back to where it started. You know?
Agreed.
Agreed. The decision that was written. So, you know, that, that part makes pretty, uh, pretty straightforward sense. So substantial hardship? Financial or otherwise hardship is a, that's the one where everyone always has a challenge with.
One.
There's your hardship. And we lose that house.
House.
We lose, and, and.
And we lose, and we have a lot of rental property and we see a potential that.
And we lose a house to Northampton.
And you're losing, right, exactly. You're using a house to Northampton. I mean, obviously that's not one day.
Uh, generosity, our heart giving in Northampton.
Let me see if I can quickly find here just that, that this is, just because I think it's definitely worth mentioning that one as well. I'm just afraid we fall back into the self-imposed hardship. Uh, unless the board disagrees and you think that, that meets the threshold.
Well, I think in 2018, we had this in-depth conversation in regards to this, which is why you guys probably wrote it that particular way.
Yep, because you.
I brought it up. I said, it was a woman that was on the board that said, why would you just spend $600, $700,000 just to have a big lot behind your house? And I said, well, because I'm, number one, I want the open space. Number two, eventually that's what I'll build there. But I won't build, I didn't buy it to build a bunch of condos behind there or do a subdivision.
I remember verbatim, you say, because I can't.
I'm so soft spoken there. She sat there and said nothing. But I think that's the reason why it's written the way it was written, that you made sure that this was out there.
If the board believes that 1313C is satisfied, is 1313C satisfied? Is that how that works?
Uh, we, we need, we need some verbiage to say that we looked at it and we did assess it. So thereby, if anyone comes up and does appeal this, right, we have to have some things. We did contemplate it and this was our decision.
And that's just, that's, and that's the big one is if that hardship is self-imposed, it's, it gets, it gets overturned. So kind of anything relating to, uh, anything relating to what was done in this decision, if they're then kind of seeking a variance, kind of based on any of the conditions kind of brought out of this decision, that would be considered self-imposed. Uh, whereas this back lot here, if we're looking at that and saying, well, this lot doesn't have frontage and then approaching it from that that direction, that's not self-imposed. That is the condition of to meet to this lot in the back here and trying to get frontage anywhere in Northampton, that would be literal enforcement. That would perhaps be a financial hardship. It is self. It's kind of the nature of the lot itself, not having frontage. It is.
So the other part is in the conditions of the original decision. Uh, number three was the existing driveway shall remain in its current configuration and easement granting rights of access across the newly created lot two, from Lyman Street to the newly created lot one, shall be deeded. So basically, the driveway was always there and will remain there and they're using the existing one. And, you know, just putting it back the way it was.
I think we're all agreed on that. It's just figuring out what to put under C that makes the future people happy. Um, I mean, I like you, I like the tact that, that you brought up. So on the, you know, this is an oddly shaped lot. It was an oddly shaped lot before and it is still an oddly shaped lot. One of the results of that very odd shape is that, um, even before, there was much less frontage relative to the overall uh, circumference of the lot on, on the street. And that in of itself is the hardship which, um, we are finding that qualifies the barriers.
Additionally, related to housing is the opportunity to demolish a building to provide access. That becomes a hardship.
It's a hardship.
Not just for them, but a hardship for the community with our housing needs.
So sign them up. Good job.
Like says, or otherwise, so. Better or worse, I signed up a couple of years ago. I'm still here.
Well, it is otherwise to the petitioner. It's funny, yeah, the, the, if this is a good or bad thing for, you know, there's the, it won't be substantially detrimental, but what if saying no would be detrimental? Doesn't say anything about that.
We'll go ahead and, uh, as best I can, writing up this decision, try to encompass uh, more broadly, the discussion we've had here to include all the points, really try to, um, encapsulate the hardship.
Yeah.
Try to, try to wholesale kind of everything, the, the findings the board made kind of collectively.
Yeah. No, that the, the fact that if to grant full, to meet the requirement of the law of the, of the zoning ordinance would require demolishing an existing structure. And even if they did that, they still would not have enough frontage. Because between uh, it's 120 feet on the Lyman, on the rain or door property and 48 feet on the other property. So that's 168 feet. So combined, they still would not have enough frontage. Because you need 100.
The number you said is higher than 100.
What's that?
The number you just said was higher than 100. No, they need 200 feet, one for each lot. Got it. One for each lot. Yes. I see. Yes, got it.
Okay, because they would still need to maintain access to the rain or door property or demolish the property just to, just to meet the requirement.
Got it.
And then we lose a dwelling unit in the city.
A rentable dwelling. I'm surprised this.
There is a motion. Um, so then number four, desirable relief granted is not to substantial detriment to the public good or nullification or substantial derogation from the intent and purpose of this ordinance.
Correct. Because again, uh, that condition of it's only in the Northampton side is.
Here's our line.
Yep. And we're not making, we're not really making any modifications to the intent, you know, the outcome of the original intent of the ordinance, which was to not have a ton of driveways right next to each other, which is just sort of my understanding.
And the intent here as well of, you know, the, the setback frontage requirements, this is the intent of that is for homes built in East Hampton. So also this waiver for it in another municipality is well within our intent. So we need the Northampton setbacks and all that when they actually go to build it.
Okay. I make a motion. Are there anybody else? Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the variance of, the application by D3 seeking the variance to the zoning ordinance for, let's see, lot 105, or map 105, lot nine for 32 Lyman Street. Uh, with the stipulation that the structure will be constructed in the municipality of Northampton and that no structures will be constructed in the city of East Hampton. And that the requests of the East Hampton Fire Department, they met and that the zoning, the, the four criteria for the findings of section 13.13 are also as described previously.
Second motion.
Any further discussion?
Do we need to add anything about the driveway access? Like referred to, that they're utilizing existing in the, what was approved in the prior approval? That way it's clear.
Yep, I can, that will be, uh, included in just the factual findings, um.
The, the variance, the previously granted easement for the property will remain in place.
There we go. Yeah, I will include that exactly. And then the conditions will need all the regular boilerplate conditions as well. Unless, conform to, D3 slides, so on and so forth.
Still second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome. As we said earlier, it'll take a few days for.
Max, Max works.
Free Dylan. We've got Max on one end and Dylan Max on the other end.
The same, same thing with him. I always go, Max, and I go, I slap him towards the back.
It, it may take a little while for Dylan to write this one up, but as soon as he does, you'll know, maybe a 20-day appeal period, at which point he'll be notified for the city that you can go post it. Right. And then you get to go play.
Thank you, Dylan, for your advice on this. How we go about it. Because we were kind of at a standstill, like, what do we do? Do we just sit and wait? Do we? Because we couldn't get any answers, really. And he was very helpful. He's saying, you gotta try this.
There we go. Now, good luck with Northampton.
Thanks so much. You got eight.
All right.
You too.
All right. Our next meeting is June 25th, 2025. Any further items to discuss? All in favor?
Aye.